This is record session today, right?
Yes, this is regular.
Okay. We're good. All right. It is 9:30 a.m., 14th day of May, 2018. We'll bring this record session of Commissioners' Court to order. Let the record show Larry Halsey, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Cranch are all present. Could you join us in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texans, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Larry, would you lead us into the place?
Heavenly Father, thank for this day you give us. Thank for all the blessings you give us. Father, we pray for wisdom here on this court. May your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, sir. All right, item number three, approved minutes of previous Commissioners' Court meeting.
I'm showing minutes from April the 9th, April the 12th, and April the 23rd. I make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I have a motion by John. Second. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. David Carter, I believe, yes. Presentation by David Carter. David, if you will come up there and I'm going to place your...
It's your...
Did you make sure the microphone was turned on?
I'll make this very, very quick. Danny and I just...
You'll limit it three minutes, we'll be good.
I'll do that under that.
Thank you, man.
I had several photographs to show you. We're just going to show one because this wouldn't plug into the machine, so we're doing it with overhead, so the color's a little off. Anyway, Danny and I discussed the possibility of, with all your blank walls in the courthouse here, of doing some artwork that reflected the community. I made one sample to show something that can be done. These can be printed on a variety of materials, canvas, paper, framed, put directly on the wall in big squares. So Danny wanted me to show you a concept. That's what I'm showing you, one of. You're going to discuss this later in your other meetings and see if we can walk through at some point and see areas where something like this might be appropriate. At that point, we can discuss the actual details. Thank you, Danny.
What we had talked about is, clarify if I'm wrong here, because we can't discuss as far as taking action on it, but like, you know, up there outside District Courtroom, against the wall, I think Ms. Aiken has one picture on one, that other wall, we saw the blank, have a canvas, if we decide to move forward, it puts something like there, they put one somewhere inside the annex, somewhere. And, okay, yeah, that's right there, that's what we was talking about, maybe. So David, if you don't mind, if you can put together like several different color types pictures and then put together the pricing and the size and things like that, then we can bring it back to the Commissioners.
I'll get it over to you in your office.
Because now they got the idea of what we were discussing.
I'll send you.
More?
Thank you, David.
I appreciate it. Turn it back? Yeah. Okay. Turn it back on. I think I've got the right thing. What's going on, Ms. Lewis?
Good morning.
How you doing today?
Good.
There it goes. Thank you, sir. Was that a good weekend, Ms. Lewis?
It was.
Let me go get them my... Hold on, David, I left those pictures in my desk. I'll be right back. Hey, David, set the...
And these people put that sign so they could see back to the left. I think this is Sparks. Which this has no meaning because it's on... You know, when those roads were dedicated back, some people don't know the way to sing the road when they're dealing with it.
All right, David, now let's give it a shot.
Well, they say a picture's worth a thousand words, so that's... You can only say so much in three minutes.
All right, item number five, presentation to the court by David Bosmussen.
Good morning. My name is David Rassnissim. My wife Glenda and I live on County Road 304. It is a dead end road that begins with a tree four feet into the roadway. See picture one. The first seven tenths of a mile is narrow in width, averaging 18 feet wide. We have lived at our residence for 12 years. There was a time we could sit on our porch and not see a car pass for an hour. Now with the rock mining operation down by the river, we hear approximately 250 trucks daily rumble noisily by empty and return laboring with full loads. As 500 trucks passing daily, rumored to increase to 700, to 800. Nine of the 12 houses along the first seven tenths of a mile are only 30 yards from the road. Needless to say, it can be annoying. See picture two. More important than our situation is the area marked "Handicap Children." Most drivers have seen the sign but have no idea what their... these parents are dealing with. The two children living within that area are autistic and lack normal communicative skills. Their father has told me also they lack the ability to judge distance as well. One day in the summer of 2016, the two children were playing in a pool set up in their driveway. As we were approaching the driveway, Quinn, who was six at the time, came running out towards the road from behind her mother's car. She was one foot onto the road when I abruptly stopped six feet from her. See picture three. Some are convinced the roadway is holding up well to all traffic. As you can see, the road is breaking up from the edges. Soon the old road will not be even 18 feet wide. See picture four. Ms. Lewis was tired of risking her life to enter the road and put up a mirror to see when she could safely enter the road. I have met with the plant manager of GCH, and he wants to be a good neighbor. He agrees that the first seven tenths of a mile, the speed limit should be reduced. Now a truck traveling 35 miles per hour will cover that seven tenths of a mile in 61 seconds. To drive 20 miles per hour would take an additional 35 seconds. The area in question would be safer, quieter, and less road damage. Back to picture two. The two autistic children are now owners of a battery-operated car. I pray they never underestimate the end of their driveway when a big truck is approaching. See picture five. Here is a sign that means absolutely nothing. Every loaded truck is more than 24 tons. It is my desire that this court would pass a motion that the county attorney would petition the Texas Department of Transportation to grant Somerville County the authority to lower the speed limit to 20 miles per hour on the first seven tenths of a mile from the entrance of the County Road 304. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Guess we'll take it under advisement as far as looking forward, Andy. If we need to do anything, we'll bring it back to the court. All right. You had that time right down to the ticket.
It's just before, sir.
You hit there right on the head. Thank you, David. All right, let's go us take action on fireworks resolution for Memorial Day that would allow the folks to sell fireworks from May 23rd to midnight, May 29th. I talked to Mark Crawford this morning. Right now, he seems to think there's no problem with the condition as it is and the rain coming. What do you think, Dwayne?
I think it'll be fine. We're well below the... where we need to be on our KDDI.
And he also was saying that a lot of folks that can sell don't participate in this particular month, not that that matters, but he says a lot of times we only have like one that may sell. Thank you, David and Glenda. All right, gentlemen, so in light of that, what do y'all feel about allowing them to sell fireworks from May 23rd to midnight, May 29th?
Make a motion that we approve the fireworks for Memorial Day.
I have a motion by John. Second. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion?
I would say that should the conditions change, we have the authority to implement restrictions.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
All in favor said motion. Five, four, zero against. Item number six, approved preliminary plat for lot 23E1 and 23E2 in the Glenroofs Hills addition. I believe this is you, Kenneth?
Yeah. All right, I've got a young lady that owns a lot off of 313 Loop, and she's wanting to split off a 1.55 acre that's already separated with a resident on it from her original lot so she can sell both of the properties.
Any questions or discussion for Kenneth?
What size of lot do you think, Kevin?
The other lots was just over a half acre.
Does it fall under the restrictions of the subdivision?
Because it's already fenced off and got its own septic system and own...
Co-op order?
Yeah, co-op order. I make a motion that we accept.
I have a motion by Kenneth. You have a second. I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion?
Nope, closes that.
All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Item number eight, discuss take action, approve preliminary plat on lot 15 through lot 26 of Sandy Heights subdivision Phase Two.
We have this... Yeah, this subdivision just off of 301 and 327. Danny Butler had started this subdivision before he passed, and Bodie's picking it up and trying to complete the part that was started. So we're... Those houses already built in 11, 12, 13, and 14, it's been there a while, but he wants to go forward with the 15 through 26. And then, like I said, this is preliminary plat, but he pretty much got it all lined out on this as what... It's following all the rules and stuff, and we've had discussion with him what his responsibilities are. I make a motion that we accept this preliminary plat on Sandy Hills Heights, is that what it's called?
Yes. Sandy Hill Heights.
Sandy Heights subdivision.
I have a motion by Kenneth. Second. Second by Don. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of said motion? That's five, four, zero against. Michelle, I know I'm four years late asking this, but do you like to have these preliminaries to file with you or just the final?
No, the final.
Just the final?
Yes, sir.
Because I keep all the preliminaries if you ever need them. Okay, item number nine, discuss take action on speed limit change in Oakview Ranch. I believe this is you, Jeff.
Yes, the HOA, or POA, is president, contacted me and requested a speed limit reduction out there. I went out and drove it, and have driven it several different times, and it's a dead end going into a residential area. There's no through traffic, so I'm going to propose we go with 35 mile an hour. That's... I drove it at 35, it's a safe speed. If you drive it at 45, you're going to have to slow down to make curves and stuff in that road. So my recommendation is we approve the 35 mile an hour speed limit on 2017, 2018 County Roads.
I have a motion by John. Second. Second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion for John? All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against.
Is that effective immediately?
Would that be effective immediately after this vote?
Yeah.
Okay. County Road 2017 and 2018 in Oakview Ranch.
Item 10, discuss take action on expo employee requiring the court's approval for an increase in pay. I think that mic turned on. Would you just check the front? There you go.
Good morning. I have an employee, Dave Fuentes, that has been there nine months, and according to the policy, I need to have your approval to move him.
You'll probably remember we changed that once we did the salary survey to a beginning was one year and then at the end was one year instead of 18 months.
Correct.
But it used to be nine and then 18, now it's always one year all the way through. So to do this one is an exception.
That's correct.
And David Fuentes, I guess, has...
And he's in what grade now?
I didn't bring that with me, Brian.
He's not a grade, he's just...
Oh, yeah, we don't have stuff for grades.
In red.
So this would be in lieu of his one-year review increase?
Yes.
The problem we get into here is that these people started out under a program, okay? And then we switched that program, the enterprises didn't follow under that program anymore. So we got a situation.
You comfortable the money's there, do what's asked to be done?
Well, I mean, we've got a... We're entering probably the slowest time for the expo coming into the summer. But, you know, I mean, we've got some financial challenges there, to be sure. We used up all their reserves, but...
Do you have an idea roughly what the raise would be, Frank?
I think it's 70 cents. I believe...
70 cents?
Yeah, don't quote me, but I believe it's in that area.
Right. 70 cents to a dollar somewhere in that range?
I...
Five months?
If we... Yeah, I mean, if we can contain the cost for the resident, I think we can probably make 70 cents.
Do you have my financial report up there?
Yeah, I think it's worth it, it's worth it, but down there. No, I'm counting. There you go.
Can you see how much is in the expo, which I have scheduled?
9,700?
I mean, that's the... That's the balance of their reserve account. That's it. We just have the rest of it online.
Lighting and sound. All right.
So that's what you want to screen, you're saying, you sent someone?
Well, he was hired under that original policy.
Where'd you get that from? Is this the...
First page, I think, toward the bottom. I have a lane in front of me.
That's cool.
Thank you, Paul. Good sign, Chief Deppy walked up to the turn.
I'm gonna walk... I'm gonna just get some clarification.
All right. John's getting clarification from somebody. So with $9,700, is that a stomach full of a little better?
Well, I mean, as good as it gets. I mean, when it's gone, it's gone.
It is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping that, you know, I'm hoping that we can turn in some advertising revenue. I sent Elaine contact information to Tractor Supply. Hoping that she'll contact them about, you know, banner sponsors and stuff. I mean, certainly, that's their people that are at the expo.
Right.
I even floated a comical, you know, for 50,000 a year, and we'll call it the Tractor Supply Arena. I don't care what it's called, you know?
Money in the bank.
Yeah.
All right, so do we have a motion to move forward with this, or do we not?
So move.
I have a motion by John to move forward with the raise for the employee, which we discussed. Second. I have a motion by John, second by Kenneth. Any further questions, complaints, concerns for Frank?
Concern going forward, we need to really take a hard look at our budgeting process for this next time. Do you see any more of these coming?
No, sir, he's the last one.
Okay, so he's in sync with them?
Yes.
Okay. And this individual didn't cause the shortage?
No, no, I'm not inferring that at all.
I know you weren't.
No. All right, I had a motion by John, second by Kenneth. All in favor said motion? Five, four, zero against. Thank you, Frank. All right, present appraisal for 301 Bo Gibbs Commissioners' Court. We got it back this morning. I had it split up in two lots together. The lot and the building comes in 436,000. If you do the building by itself, it's 394,000, and then that 0.62 acres up front will be 61,000, the land that, you know, borders Bo Gibbs and Progress? That may not be Progress, whatever that is right there. In you have. But I can email all of you a copy of this, I just wanted to go ahead and present it.
What's the total?
The total, if you buy both lots together, 1.24 acres, is $436,000.
Is that with the building on it?
Yes. Yes, and a cul-de-sac.
Okay, okay.
Does he mention the square footage of the building? Just for grants, I didn't look.
Yes, he does, but just a little bit further.
Okay.
Yeah, he lays it out pretty in-depth.
And that seems very reasonable market rate.
Yes. But if y'all so decide, we'll put it on June. If we have a meeting before that, if you decide you don't go up for RFPs, then we will. I just want to advise you what it was appraised at and that we did receive it back.
Thank you.
What was that number again? Total lot with building, $436,000. If you were to split it out, so the building and 0.62 acres is 394,000, and the 0.62 acres that lies right there on Bo Gibbs is 61,000. All right, item number 12, discuss take action on renewing the contract between DSHS Vital Statistics and Somerville County. Michelle?
So this contract is actually just a renewal, but it's renewing the contract for five years instead of two. And it does have a segment in there about the Vital Statistics basically forcing us to get a background check done for all employees that deal with vitals. And of course, that would be... The cost would be to the county. But that's about all I saw that was... You know, that really stood out. It's just a renewal.
I mean, we have to go through them for the background check?
We do.
Okay.
Have we before?
We've never done it before, no.
So...
So this will be a first time that we would actually have to do that, and it's actually out of Ford.
Or you think, and we might, or... I mean, we've never done it before, that's all the change.
The background check? Correct. No, we will eventually have to, yes.
Does it say what the price is?
It does not. It does not.
Is there a way to find out, or...
I can find out.
We need a budget for that.
Right.
When should it become effective that we have to start running those backgrounds?
Is that an annual?
Uh, you know, I'm not really for sure if it's an annual thing or not.
I mean, those are some of the things that I need to have to know going forward. And when's the first round of those have to be done, or, you know, is it this budget year or next?
Right. I'll have to find out. I mean, it's weird they made it seem, it didn't seem like it would be very expensive considering that everybody that dealt with vitals across the state of Texas was going to have to get one done, but I don't have an actual amount.
And so it's not really everybody in your office either, it's just those that deal with... Or is it everybody in your office?
Everybody in my office deals with vitals.
When's the contract going to be?
September 1st, 2018.
Be in this budget year, then?
If they need them done, maybe they have it, that you got it...
Which I have money in it.
...in nine days or something like that.
Right. But I've got money in my budget if we have to do it this year or this...
Father, do you have any idea what a background search?
I do the free online, so...
That's why I love it.
But we have to... We're going to be required to use, or...
I would be very surprised if it's in excess of $50 per surge.
Right. It's probably going to require the fingerprint through the FDI, which I've done through, so I would...
So it's a have-to deal, no matter what?
Right.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Larry.
Second.
I have a second by John. Do I have any further questions or discussions? All in favor said motion? That's five, four, zero against. All right, item 13, discuss take action on order purchase of three vehicles for Sheriff's Department to be paid for in next year's budget. These are ones, as we've discussed, replacing vehicles and then pass the older vehicles down.
Yes, sir. What we're... Excuse me. What we have discussed is purchasing three new Ford pickups like the sheriff and Thomas drives for CID vehicles. Those will be for our detectives, for their use, and then the vehicles, the used ones that they have now, will be passed to the SROs. They'll be striped, they'll be marked to look like patrol units as close as can be, and those will be used for the SRO. So we'll have a Ford Explorer, a Charger, and a Durango that will go to the SRO.
I thought we discussed two vehicles for now, when I was in the judge's office.
We...
Until budget was on...
We really...
We can order them now and not have to pay for them to...
Yes, sir.
Or what?
What we really need is, we need three units to cover our SROs, because right now, we have a deputy in there that's using his vehicle, so that's... That deputy is going to go back to the street, and he needs his vehicle on the street. So that's actually going to leave three open slots for the three SRO vehicles plus Shane that we've got to cover with SRO vehicles. So we really need three pickup trucks that will cover the SRO spots. Shane's already got his patrol unit, so that's going to stay as an SRO school vehicle. But then we've got three other SROs that do not have vehicles.
What was the price for one of them, or do you have a price for all three? Have you already put that together?
We've been working with SAMPAC, which is the buy board.
Right.
And getting the lowest price that we can, and what we've come up with, Thomas has here, that's why he's here. Last year, the vehicles ended up being 44,000 roughly for the pickups, and we got a price on the units that we were looking at doing, and they've gone to about 45,000. That's because they're putting the cage and some of the stuff in it that's required for them to work. But some of that, they did not include a radio, but I think that was a miscommunication by defender. We're trying to get that sorted out, because that's going to be a $5,800 purchase that they didn't show in this estimate, but I believe that was just a... An oops on their part, but we're trying to get that squared away. So we're looking at $45,000 per unit for the pickups.
135,000 roughly for all three of them, roughly?
If... Do you think that radio will be in with that 45?
So whenever I look back at the quote that they gave us in February of 16, whenever we did everything on Allen's truck, as basic as we can... whenever we did everything on Allen's truck, as basic as we can get with the emergency vehicle appointment, it came out to be about forty-three, and it included a radio. And with a couple of things that, I guess Ford went up on some prices and this and that, I was looking back and forth, and like, well, it looks like there's a radio included, but it doesn't show it on the menu. So I'm just trying to go back and forth with the SAMPAC guy, and he's going to look into it.
And these aren't four-wheel-drive trucks, really?
Yes.
Eric, you would need four-wheel-drives for detectives and CID folks?
Well, it's not that we have to, it's just that, you know, they are required to come out in bad weather if they're called out, and we can use them at other times if need be. So they don't have to be four-wheel-drive, if y'all don't want them to be, but we're requesting.
Do they currently have four-wheel drive?
The two that we have are four-wheel-drive vehicles, yes, sir.
The vehicles that are going to school resource officers?
They are not four-wheel-drive.
And who do they, who drives those currently?
Those are driven by our investigators, that'll be.
The new vehicles that are being purchased are being purchased for whom?
For the investigators.
So the current vehicles that they're driving are unmarked?
Yes, sir.
Automobiles, two-wheel-drive, and we're requesting four-wheel-drive pickups?
Yes, sir.
On the cars that they're currently driving, that will go to the school resource officers, what does the decoration package, how much will that cost on the vehicles to give to the resource officers?
They're going to roughly be five hundred dollars apiece to get them striped and marked.
And that'd be two or three?
Three.
Is these F-150s?
Yes, sir.
You know, they're out of production right now.
I do not know, I know they've been in contact with SAMPAC. I don't know if they've got a delivery date, or if they've got some on the floor. A lot of times SAMPAC will foresee these, and they'll order several in advance, so I don't know.
So with the beginning of their budget year, they always, you know, especially with the interceptor utilities, those Explorers, they'll preorder about two hundred and fifty. And the same thing with the trucks, they'll preorder about a hundred and fifty. And so they usually have them on hand, coming off the assembly line that they've already preordered. So it's just kind of seeing where we put our order in, and they say, okay, we got it, we got it, or left it away.
Are you wanting to see the pricing of two-wheel drive? Do you happen to have that many cents? Is that?
No, I was trying to establish in my own mind the justification for a four-wheel-drive pickup when currently we're driving two-wheel-drive automobile.
I see.
It's about a, it's about a three-thousand-dollar package for a four-wheel drive.
You mean three thousand dollars for just four-wheel drive?
For the, it's.
I know it's years ago, but two thousand for one-time four-wheel drive, it went up that much.
It's about, you're looking at.
What's the whole budget here?
Almost three thousand for the four-wheel drive option, and then it has a E-lock in the rear end.
They have to order them like four months ahead of time, is the problem, is what I'm hearing.
The ones that you got, the new ones you got, they're front-wheel drive.
Yes, sir.
And they're working good, the vehicles.
The Explorers, they're all-wheel-drive all the time.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm asking, in the future, y'all will want to replace, get some of them, or something like that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, those have worked very well for us, the Explorers have.
So, do you have, okay, the all-wheel drive is like a four-wheel drive?
That's correct.
You want everybody to have four-wheel drives, apparently?
It would be nice with the rivers and the bad weather, because we are a twenty-four-hour department. And so if we need to get somewhere, it's nice to have four-wheel drive for everyone to be able to get around. Is it necessary? Not every day, no, sir, it's not. But if we do need to get down to the river, or if we need to get somewhere on an icy snowy day, it's a very good option to have.
And you would more, you'd more likely use these pickups to do that kind of stuff?
Well, we can.
Why do you want the pickups?
We use the pickups, number one, they're less expensive than the Explorers. We don't want them marked, we want them to be used for our investigators. So they're not going to be marked units, we want them to look completely different than our patrol units. We would like them to be four-wheel-drive, because if there is, we'll say, a death on the river, then our investigators still have to drive down to the river in the units in which they operate to investigate the death. Or if there's a call-out on an icy day, the investigators have to respond and come out and take care of the call, so. And the bed space of the pickup, there will be a cover, and I can't pronounce that word, tonneau cover, over the bed of the truck to cover the equipment that they need to carry, because they need specialized equipment, cameras to go out and investigate scenes.
Your maintenance on your four-wheel drive is larger than two-wheel drive?
I'm sorry, sir?
Maintenance on a four-wheel drive will increase the cost of the maintenance over a two-wheel drive.
As they get older, yes, sir, if there's something that breaks in the front end, yes. There's probably a little difference in fuel mileage, yes, sir. The four-wheel drive is probably a little more expensive. I wouldn't say just tremendously, but it is more expensive than a two-wheel drive.
You all have maintenance and fuel consumption?
Yes, sir.
Say, Brian, we discussed this before. We don't have the money right now, but we can order them without any money.
That's correct, I mean, there's such a lead time on these vehicles that even if we intended to pay for them out of this budget, they would not be delivered prior to September thirtieth, for us even considering part of this budget. They would come in in October at the earliest. So basically, they're just asking for permission to enter into a purchase contract to purchase these. No money is going to be expended at all. They'll, because they're such a lead time, and they're delivered unmarked. If we welch out and decide we don't want them, I'm sure there's another department right behind us that would take them.
Well, they're going to remain unmarked?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm just saying that SAMPAC and the company doesn't mark them, so they're playing Jaden when they come out. Any other department would pick them up.
The last time we ordered units was in November, and we didn't get them until April or May. So it takes a long time to build these trucks.
Especially with the demand they have right now.
You ready for motion?
If you're ready.
I'm ready, I'll make it.
I have a motion by Larry to proceed forward with three vehicles for Sheriff's Department coming out of eighteen, nineteen-year budget, correct? Do I have a second? I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Dwayne or Thomas? All in favor said motion, that's by far, zero against.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And I think you're on the next one too, aren't you, Dwayne?
Yes, sir.
Discuss take action on the counter-receiving found property from the Sheriff's Department?
Again, we're going through cleaning out the property room. It's been more than ten years since it's been cleaned out and property's been looked at. We have numerous items here that is not tied to a case, that's been put into the property room. We don't know when it was there, what it was there for. There's some that are absolutely untied to a case. There was one that, it's a misdemeanor case with no suspects. And all the owners have attempted to be contacted, no one has contacted us back. So we're just asking, we have court orders here granting the property to Somerville County. We're just asking that the county commissioners accept this into the property of Somerville County.
And then what would you do, like use it or sell it, auction it?
That would be up to.
What is the property?
There's a propane torch, there's some needle-nose pliers, there's a handful of tools, screwdrivers, Ryobi screw gun, hammer, duct tape, nut drivers, wire strippers, a red floor jack, lug nuts, and a four-way lug wrench. So a lot of that could go to the county barn.
Right, road bridge and building maintenance would basically get all of that.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the property?
So moved.
I have a motion by John. Second. Second by Don. Any further questions or comments for Dwayne? All in favor said motion, that's by far.
Thank you.
Zero against.
There's one question, when I was doing inventory in there, you've had a large number of weapons.
Mm-hmm.
From all indications, they've been there for.
A long time.
Several administrations, have you got a plan?
We do, what we're going to do with those weapons, of course, some of them, depending on the case, we're not allowed to destroy. And it is our intention, unless the court decides otherwise, if we're able to get rid of them, we want them destroyed.
And there's a surface, I guess, that will, or we can take it and smelt it?
We usually, in the past, I was told that they would take them out to Middle Oathian and throw them in the smelter out there and watch them melt, so.
Well, when you do that, yeah, we'll document, and just make sure we have two people taking them and.
Right. It's all going to be done with the chain of custody, everything that we have is done that way.
Yeah, I was just surprised that it'd been there for.
Oh, we've probably got, I don't know, seventy, sixty, seventy guns in there that we need to, they're going through slowly, yeah.
All right, thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, discuss take action on grounds maintenance contract. This is the one we approved the money for last session. Andy and Brian finished the contract. I just need the court to accept it. It lists all the properties that'll be taken care of. It's everything we went over last, it's just the contract that backs it up. Do I have a motion to accept this?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry, second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, by far, zero against. Hey, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
This card right here, would you mind either getting him a copy also, once this is filed?
Yes.
We'll keep one, and then he wants one also.
Sure, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
I hope you're welcome.
That's day fourteen. All day.
All day long.
My anniversary.
Your anniversary.
Happy anniversary. Yeah, me too. Do you mind putting that in? Sixty-three years.
Oh, my gosh.
How long? Sixty-three. Well, all right.
Neither one of you have to finish each other's sentences, do you?
Item number sixteen, discuss take action for RFPs related to the pavilion at the golf course. We've discussed many different areas, what we're going to do, metal, roll-up doors, windows, windows and roll-up doors, I don't know if we're actually headed here. Guess we'll find out. Go ahead, Larry, John?
Well, what we're focusing on, on this particular topic, is the north wall that, of the pavilion overlooking the golf course. Having that re, that old metal removed, new metal put in, it's about a hundred and three, four, five feet in length. Five windows that can be opened and closed, double windows. With a roll-up door on the northwest corner, and a roll-up door on the east end. And we would like to go out and, now, we can purchase the materials, county can purchase them, and have the labor, that's part of the embedded discussion here. Or we can go out for bids on.
Turnkey?
Turnkey. And so I open that discussion up for conclusion.
Like, this is a reminder, state statutes require any expenditure in excess of fifty thousand would be subject to sealed competitive bid, now.
This is not going to be.
Right, so, you know, so if getting proposals for this type of, if you want to go outsource, you know, it would be kind of a voluntary thing, or we can get a couple, three vendors in and discuss it with them, and, you know, we don't actually have to go through a whole bid process.
Instead of us trying to get some specs together, I'd go the, this way. Because we can, about three people, three different individuals, and we can discuss what we want.
If any of you have recommendations, if you turn them over to the auditor's office, and we'll contact, make sure we get two or three. Who would take the lead that we can put them with to do the walkthrough and the site visit and what you're wanting?
Us.
Okay.
Sounds good to me, do you like it?
We need them.
Not really, I mean, it's kind of just giving me some direction. Once we get those together, we'll bring it back for formal court action to proceed.
Okay, so we don't need a motion or anything for this?
No, sir, not.
I guess just give him your drawings, specs, and that way.
Well, this, we will. We'll work through that.
Actually, I'll just get the vendors to contact me and make sure we get two or three, and.
Bring it back for approval and.
Yep.
Make it happen.
All right, great.
And again, if y'all have any recommendations, just let me know, and we'll make sure they're included.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item number seventeen, open sealed proposals for outsourced IT and management services?
Yes, sir, we received one from SLG Technologies, which is here in Glen Rose.
Wouldn't we have to receive one?
No, they don't want back in. No.
And recommend that we take it under advisement until we go into executive session.
I have, I have a motion to accept this proposal.
Motion to accept it. Make a motion, and we accept that single IT proposal.
I have a motion by John. Second. Second by Kenneth. All in favor said motion, that's by far. Thank you, Brian. Okay, item number eighteen, approved advertising for sealed bids, number one is group health insurance.
Well, actually, if you want us to take them all at one time, and I'll turn this over to Susie, but we're a little bit early, but there's a reason for that. United Healthcare is wanting to come in early, I think, is what we heard.
That's better than what we usually fight towards September.
So you want a motion for all three?
All four?
Yes, it would be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we advertise for sealed bids for group health insurance, life insurance, dental insurance, and vision insurance.
I have a motion by John, second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Susie? All in favor said motion, by far, zero against. Item number nineteen, open sealed bids for gas and diesel oil and oil products?
When I was done at my auditor's conference on Tuesday, I got a text message that our longtime provider of oil, I mean, gas, was going out of business that very week, and. And that they were going to be done by Friday, and then by Wednesday, we found out they were out of gas. So it kind of put us into a rut, so we had to need to go into seeking proposals to replace them.
Who is the interim?
Right now, we're going with Taylor.
Taylor, okay.
And we went with Taylor because of an existing relationship. They were the winning bidder for our oil products, and they were willing to step in and to do this. So we called around to all the other counties, school districts, trying to get to, of course, all the auditors were down in Austin with me, so I was round-tableing with the Johnson County auditor, the Arant County auditor, Austin County auditor, to figure out what they, they had no idea about Lambert, which was affecting Johnson tremendously. So anyway, so we got these proposals in. I expect them to be very similar, but we just needed to go ahead and get them opened. Most of them are probably going to be priced at a spot market plus a certain number of cents profit.
Okay.
The first one, I don't know. The first one is from Myatt Fuels, and I believe they're out of Clifton.
By it.
Myatt.
Myatt.
Yes, they're out of Clifton. The next one. Somewhere in here, we make them put their name. He's got all these specs. I can tell you that Wanda Campbell signed it. Here we go. Haygood and Campbell LLC, and they're out of Alito. This one is from Lucky Lady Oil Company in Fort Worth, Texas. This one is from Sun Coast Resources out of Houston.
Would y'all go on the internet to find out?
Actually, these are from all the other counties around us. I didn't have to worry about my staff when I was out of the office, because they had a lot to do with all this happening. The next one...
And they did a good job, we might have, scrambling to get... Because when they called Wednesday for fuel that we needed, they said, yeah, we're sorry, we're closing Friday, but we're out of fuel today.
We're out of fuel, yeah, aren't you closed now then?
Right.
The next one, yeah, we... my text message, my phone was blowing up. This one is from Holstein Oil and Distributing, and they are out of Fort Worth. This is who Taylor has become, from what I understand. This is from PF and E Oil Company in Brownwood.
PF and E?
PF and E, yes, sir. And the last, but not least, is Campbell, H-A-M-P-E-L, Campbell Oil Distributor. And they are out of Crescent.
Where you at, seven, eight?
Yes, sir. And which is interestingly, because the last four times we've done this for gas, we've only had one, Lambert, and the one that went out of business. So we would ask that we take those under advisement, and we may have to call a special session to award...
Make a motion that we accept the proposed bids for fuel.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Don. Any further questions or comments? All in favor said motion, five far, zero against. Would you like to go ahead and set that for the twenty-first to set up, or would you wait and want to look it over and then tell us? Because we got to Thursday before we have to jacks it to it.
Yeah, I mean, if everyone's counting to the twenty-first...
Twenty-first on a Monday.
We can do that.
All you and I were gonna do is budget talks.
Right. We can just simply have a quick ten-minute meeting to award fuel contracts, so that we... It's our departments know who to call.
Is that good with you, gentlemen? Nine-thirty next Monday morning? I'll have that set it up.
All right.
There you go. You've got them done. All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right. Item number twenty, approved budget transfers. Back to you, Brian.
I sent these to you. All of these are interdepartmental, with the exception of the one contingency, which was paying the balance due on the new refrigeration system at the senior citizens center. We paid half down for the equipment and then half down, and actually, he had it installed before he picked up the check for the equipment. I don't understand why he wanted it that way, but he looked inside, that was it. But the rest are staying within their departments.
Make a motion, we approve the budget transfers.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor said motion, five far, zero against. Approved remainder accounting bills. Back to you, Brian.
You should have two emails. The grand total that we're requesting permission for is two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, four-nine-one, point nine-three. In addition, we reimburse Zach Davis through payroll for thirteen dollars and twenty-nine cents for a meal.
Make a motion to renew payer bills. I have a motion by Kenneth, payer bills.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor said motion, five far, zero against. Item number twenty-two, approved treasurer's report.
Make a motion to renew treasurer's report.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion for Susie? Thank you, Leslie. All in favor said motion, that's five far, zero against. Item number twenty-three, receiving approved monthly reports from county departments. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Larry to accept and approve monthly reports.
Second.
Second by Kenneth. Any questions or discussion for any department heads?
I'd like to compliment the golf course on their excellent April. They just shy of a quarter of a million dollars for the month, two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine, and twenty-one cents, so...
Best April in history, I think, to this day.
Since we've taken over, yes, sir.
Great. All right. All in favor, five far, zero against. All right. At ten-twenty-six, we'll retire into an executive session. The first one is dealing with personnel matters. I know Susie, Brian, Andy, sheriff's department, court, I think the sheriff's department's requested. I'll... outside of that, need a little break here, Larry?
We're gonna take a break. No, no, no.
Thank you, Michelle. All right. It is eleven-nineteen, May fourteen. We are reconvened in regular session. Out of the executive session on personnel, can we have a motion we want to make regarding the sick time, comp time, vacation time?
I'll make a motion that HR provide us with a change to policy regarding the use of compensated time and sick time.
Make a motion, a second.
I have a second by John. I have a... I have a motion by John. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? Andy, would you like comment? All in favor said, that's five far and zero against. All right. Now we'll retire back into an executive session on contract matters at eleven-twenty-one. Thank y'all.